To the Town of Shrewsbury zoning board of appeals, public hearing for Monday, September 28th, 2015. Before we get started, there, when we get to the public hearings portion of the proceedings, there's a few informal rules that we follow. I will read the appeal into the minutes. The applicant can then come to the table, tell us what they want, why they want it. If you're here for a variance, it is incumbent upon you to give us a hardship. It meets the statutory requirements for delivering a hardship. Some of us up here may or may not have some questions for you. Once we are done, I will open it up to anyone in the floor that will have questions. If you're here for a special permit, it's incumbent upon you to let us know why it is not less detrimental than what is already existing. Same rules. First order businesses to review and approve minutes. Can I get a motion? Do we have them?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Do we have them? Did you? Anybody opposed? We have three bills that are, two bills, I'm sorry, for, I didn't need approval. One for $396 for the Telegram and Gazette, the August 31st legal notice, and 145 for certain members of the board to attend a Chapter 40B seminar. The total is $551. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Our first 6:30 public hearing is continued from August 31st. Our meeting, 7:30, Boston Turnpike, TM Crawley and Associates. And they're requesting to continue?
Yes, they're requesting to continue again, to be heard on October 26th, the zoning board meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Move to grant request for continuation.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Our second 6:30 hearing is continued from July 27th, 152 Hartford Turnpike, Full Throttle Marine.
Thank you.
Brett Marsmo.
Stephen Elworthy. I'm not sure if you guys are fully aware, but I'll just state it as it's written right in front of you as well. I, Stephen Elworthy, and Brett Marsmo, both owners of Full Throttle Marine and more, would like to withdraw our request for the special permit for marine vessel repair shop, per our conversation with the town manager, due to our original commercial garage license issued by the Board of Selectmen, already meeting the town's requirements. So that would be for the, the one that we are withdrawing from. The two that we are requesting would be the special permit for boat and jet ski storage of 100 units for short-term storage, starting October to about March annually.
Okay.
The second would be the special permit for marine vessel sales. And the land variance is to display marine vessels in the front yard of 152 Hartford Turnpike to overcome the inability to see our active marina due to the property being set up on a hill. This hardship has not allowed us to utilize the tremendous amount of traffic on Route 20 to help grow our business. With permission to display boats in the designated area on John and Doug Ellis's land, we will overcome the hardship of the placement of the building we work out of on 152 Hartford Turnpike. The boats that will be on display would be boats that would be either for sale or, for the most part, just for sale, whether it's a unit that we own or a consignment vessel.
So are the vessels similar to what's pictured?
Yep.
Are they going to be stored?
Correct, yes. Yep.
And how many units did you say?
For the short-term storage, we're looking at an estimated of 100 boats, and that's with all hopes.
On the high side.
Yeah, we went on the high side. To give you an idea, we've, you know, we've, we've stored an estimated about 60 or so in previous years. So we, of course, wanna, we want growth, so that's why we kinda are aiming high. And the key there in the bottom kinda displays the different pictures and what they are meaning. And as you can see in the first page of the pictures, it clearly shows that all of our boats on the property even currently are unable to be seen from the road, which is what we are up against due to the building that we're renting.
So based on these pictures, where on the property are they being displayed? Will they be displayed?
The bottom picture, that flat grass spot.
Yep.
I believe it is 25, 24 and a half feet off of that, where the grass is higher and unmoed currently, is where they will be displayed.
Okay.
And it might actually be a little bit to the left of that as well. The, the ending point is a little bit further than that tall bush.
That's a good question.
And there's an excessive amount of land. The, the land that we're requesting to display on is, there's, there's a lot more than what's we're asking for.
Is there any right-of-way issues? Is there a tension wire above?
Well, I, this is a new location and what I've looked at before, so I'm not, I'm not sure about that. But what I do know is this time at least they have it clearly marked how many feet away from the front property line it would be. They have it clearly marked, the dimension, dimension, and dimension, the space where they will be displayed, but I'm not sure about the power lines above.
Is there enough storage room?
Plenty of storage room, yeah.
Even if you weren't underneath the power lines?
Well, last year, we actually stored in a little bit of a different area than what we were going to be doing, and we stored nearly 60 in a much smaller area. You know, it's hard to kinda designate and say, it's not like a car where you have perfect dimensions on average vehicles. You know, it's like, it, they're, it's like a slice of pizza when it's a boat on a trailer. So it's kind of puzzle pieces in order to, to do it, but yeah, there's, there's about 10 times as much land underneath the power lines than what we're calling for.
Okay. Mel, anything?
I just have a curiosity question.
Go ahead.
Have you heard from, ask elector, New England Power?
In regards to the natural gas?
No, in regard to the easement that they must have under the power lines.
Yes, they've, they've never, ever, ever said anything to both our landlord or us in the three-plus years that we've been there. And the, and the trucks on occasion.
The butter is in the butter, correct?
And the trucks on occasion will come down and they'll ask, you know, just to let you know, we're gonna come down and look at the...
The reason I ask is we have another hearing later tonight where New England Power is, I guess they're against it, right?
No, they're not. No, they wanna review it.
Oh, they wanna review it?
Not against it, no.
Okay.
The land, the land is owned by John and Doug Ellis.
Yeah, but they probably have an easement guaranteed. That's right there.
If, if there was a question in regards to the power lines, if you didn't store the boats in the power line area, would you still have enough room to store the amount of boats that you wanna store?
Yes. We would just have to come up with a different plan for where they would be displayed in front of you.
Right.
But yes, I mean, like I said, like I said, for the past...
The storage is the display in the front, is where they're showing.
Yes, and, and to kinda give you a, a more definitive answer is, in the years past, we have not stored where we're requesting today.
Okay.
So they're actually gonna be even more tucked away, away from the, the street inability to kinda secure the lot for us. But in the, in the previous two years, they have been not under the power.
How many, how many are you displaying?
The, on the frontage, on Route 20, the, the area is 55 feet long, which would allow us to display an estimated of four boats.
Okay, so that's a...
No.
And that's on the high end. Truly, truly on the, you know, it would, more like two to three boats.
Maybe we should reference it in our decision though.
Yeah, yeah.
In case there's a problem.
Can we do that?
I agree.
Sure. Yep.
Okay. Anyone else up here have a question?
No.
Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Okay. What we're suggesting is we're going to reference in our decision, assuming it passes, then if there's a right-of-way issue, that, that is addressed with New England Power.
Okay. And that's for the boat storage, underneath the power lines is what?
It's on, anything underneath the power lines.
Anything underneath the power lines.
Anything in the easement. Okay.
Yeah. They may have concerns.
Even the display, you're right.
They may have concerns if they can't access the easement that's there.
Right, and I will say that all access to getting, getting to our boats.
Uh huh.
It does not interfere with their direct routes on how they drive up and down those power lines, for sure.
That's good.
Their entrance, their access to off of Route 20, the way that they would pull in off of Route 20, is fully open. Our boat display is about, I'd say, close to 100 feet away from their driveway.
Perfect. Okay. Okay. There be no...
It's gotta go through that process.
Yeah. Okay, there be no further questions or comments, we'll take it under advisement, and you will be notified of our decision.
Okay.
Thank you guys. Our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Scott Winchester, 101 Auburn Street, Auburn, Mass., for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4-B, to remove and replace a mobile home on Lot Number 34, and to replace a mobile home on Lot Number 45, which has been vacant for six years in the commercial business district upon property located at 151 Hartford Turnpike. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 52, Plot 88. Welcome, and please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Scott Winchester, owner of H2M Mobile Home Park at 151 Hartford Turnpike. I'd like to remove, my request to remove and replace mobile home number 34. We're gonna rehab that, and I think we have a buyer for it. What I'm looking for is to, I have an empty lot, Number 45, it's been vacant for six years. A trailer became in disrepair and the individual cannot afford it anymore, so it was taken off the premises and junked. We've been doing a lot of work in the park since then, improving the paving, removing trees. We ended up taking over three other mobile homes because people couldn't, they passed away and estates couldn't handle it, so we rehabbed those. And, so now we feel the market's gotten better, plus I try and keep the rent low, I've only raised it once in eight years, and it's at $315 a month. So by having this lot, I do have one other I'm probably gonna go for next year to put another mobile home on, but the more rent I have, the easier it is for me to keep the rent down for the individuals in the park.
Any questions? Anyone?
Yeah, you were about placing it with just another trailer?
Correct.
Okay.
Same size, same, pretty much, yeah.
I just have a question. If something is empty for six years, that doesn't affect its zoning?
So what the review of this property was, is because the mobile home park in its entirety is a non-conforming use, we no longer allow mobile home parks, so we looked at it as a whole rather than individual pads within the space. So it's a special permit when they change something within the lot.
Okay. Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, there be no further questions or comments, we'll take it under advisement, you'll be notified of our decision.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Van K Nguyen, manager, V&amp;J LLC, 15 Vinny Way, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a variance to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws. Sorry about that. To reduce the side yard setback, I'm sorry, zoning bylaw under Section 6, Table 2, to reduce the side yard setback of the existing single-family dwelling to 18 feet in order to subdivide the lot into two rear lots through the A&R process in the Residence A District upon property located at 396 Grafton Street. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 41, Plot 3-3. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Donald O'Neill. I'm a lawyer with an office at 10 Mechanic Street in Worcester, and I represent Van Nguyen, who's the manager of V&amp;J LLC, which owns the property. There is this, a plan, I think, that's in your packet. We are seeking essentially two feet of relief from the requirement, it's actually the relief is being sought on the house lot, but the necessity has to do with the requirement for a rear lot and the requirement that you maintain 50 feet of width all the way back for the, for the, until the lot opens up, if you will. In terms of the basis for a variance, I think there are several. The lot shape itself is irregular in that it is essentially twice as wide in the back as it is in the front, so that does represent some challenges in terms of what we're proposing to do. But more importantly, I think, in looking at this, the existing structure that's on the property, it's placed in such a way that necessitates the need for the relief that's sought because the side yard setback is 20 feet. If you look facing the plan on the southerly side, which is on the left, there's actually 32 feet of setback available at that point. What's required is 20. On the opposite side, we've got 18, so that it, in effect, if the house had, was shifted to the south, you would have 10 feet over the minimum side yard requirements on both sides. So the lot itself, we've got four and a half acres, just under 160 feet of frontage. Clearly, there's sufficient area to support an additional house on that lot. And the only, as I say, the only requirement that we're looking for the relief on is the two feet on the corner, it's just one small corner basically of the house where it abuts the proposed lot line. Again, where we exceed all of the area requirements, we meet the frontage requirements, and as I say, they're, they're two good-sized lots with plenty of room for an additional house. The inability basically to use this land to its full extent is also constitutes a financial hardship in that...
That's, that's no matter here.
Okay, well, in the shape of the lot and the house, that would be the basis, the variance rationale that we would submit to you.
Why was that house located where it is now?
When?
Instead of, instead of meeting the required setbacks?
Um...
Was that done before the lot was split?
Yes. Well, well, the, the lot actually hasn't, the A&R plan has not been approved yet.
But it's really, it's a self-created hardship, that's.
Well, the placement of the lot, I mean, the, the lot itself has, there is sufficient room for the structure and for the setbacks. I'd say that you, structure can be a hardship, and I would say that the placement of this structure on this lot is a hardship in that it prevents the creation of the additional lot, which would otherwise meet all of your requirements and exceed all of your requirements.
Unless you move the house.
Unless you move the house or unless you cut the corner off, which is another option, but it seems to be an unnecessary move and an undue expense in terms of cutting off, a foot off the corner of the house. You still end up basically with two houses on the property. I'm not sure what point that serves, the ability is there to do that if you needed to do it, but again, it seems to be, if it were a situation where you could not bring this property into compliance, then I would say that, you know, that would be one thing. But in this situation, again, there was, there's enough room, the overall parcel to begin with, to accommodate a house of this size and an additional lot, and if the relief were not granted, you could cut the corner.
Mm-hmm.
But I, it seems to be, I don't know what the point of that would be.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay. Do you have anything?
I'm all set.
No questions.
No questions? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard?
Yes, I represent Mr. Joseph Drage, and we, and I have a list of some of butters that oppose this variance being given.
Can you just state your name for the record?
My name is attorney Mark Jubert.
Okay. Any questions or any...
Well, yes. I, I would probably echo what Mr. Chairman has already said, that this is a self-induced hardship, that according to Blackman versus the Board of Appeals in Barnstable, a profit is, a hardship is not defined as the inability to profit from subdividing and abridging or derogating bylaws or ordinances. Shrewsbury's in particular here, quite clear. And I, I would argue that, that the owner of the, this lot has already received a, a sort of variance through the bylaws by having a truncated frontage. And that, as one of the members of the board has already articulated, that house was already placed, and I would, I would strongly oppose this, along with several of butters, who I've brought a list of, to have this formally put on the record in written form as well. And if need be, these butters have also asked me if I would also appeal if, if any variance was given. And I don't know if this is the right time to present.
Only if you wish. Only if you wish.
I wish.
Okay.
And I would've had copies made of it, but they just signed it.
Yeah, I only need one. It's a petition, a butters' opposition, the application for a variance. I won't read the whole thing, but basically...
Last page has the butters' names and addresses and phone numbers. Started off being just a simple list, but it, it almost took on the nature of a memorandum of law, but not quite.
Yeah, and it has four butters' signatures. Okay, thank you. Any... State your name for the record.
My name is Michael McMahon. I'm a longtime resident of Shrewsbury. I'm the next-door neighbor of a butter. I've lived there for 11 years. I've lived in Shrewsbury with my wife Sandy for 30 years. There are a number of reasons that I'm opposed to, so I'll do my best to articulate them. First, from a personal standpoint, one of the drawing cards that drew me to my house was the configuration of all these lots that are in a row, and I have a copy of the plot plan from the town that you can see. There's four or five lots in a row that, the house is a set back about 500 feet, 450 to 500 feet, and then there's green space behind. All part of our lots, on my particular lot, at 398, there's 500 feet between my house and the end of the lot in the back. So I'm suggesting if this is allowed, 396 will probably put this house, which, by the way, they don't show you in the plot plan, but they'll probably put it in the green space in the back, which I think would have adverse effect for me personally, but not only that, but there are other lots that are similarly situated, and it may be a, a bit of a floodgate effect. I know 408 is almost a mirror image of the lot, and their house is set way back, and they have land in the back. So whether they would attempt to do it thereafter, but it certainly could have an effect of affecting all of the...
I'm, I'm only concerned about this particular lot. I, I don't care about anything else right now, about other lots, other than the one in question.
I believe that one of the things...
That's irrelevant.
...that's the neighborhood.
Right.
So that's one thing. But I'll, I'll move on. Secondly, with regard to the merits of their petition, they say in the petition that the existing structure on the property was not properly located at the time that the construction took place, and I believe one of the board members raised that point. Well, I would have to disagree with that. I know the gentleman who lived there for years. He was not only attorney, but he was an attorney who did real estate. He put his house in a certain spot for a certain reason, the same reason I bought the property I have, so that the house would be in the middle of the lot, and he'd have the green space around him because he liked the wooded area. The second, or the third numbered paragraph on their hardship, when they say a financial hardship...
That's irrelevant. I've already dismissed that, so you don't need to address it.
Well, then I'll move off of that, and then maybe the most compelling argument I could make is from a safety issue. When, and I don't know how familiar all of you are with regard to this, but when you go down a three, when you come down Grafton Street from north to south, coming from Route 9 going down, this is by far the most dangerous curve on the road. It's a blind curve. My wife and I, and we don't care how many times people come to our house, the last thing we tell them before they leave is, make sure you look to the left at the last second before you pull out because cars fly down that hill. 398 Grafton Street, 400 and 396 already have this on the corner, and this would be, where the driveway would be located is even further up, and it would be a shorter distance on this blind down the hill. And if there's any doubt in any of your minds, I would say after today's meeting, please take a look at it, and I don't mind if you go into my driveway and try to come out, you'll see just what I mean. It's completely blind. And I'm talking not only the safety of someone coming out of that driveway, but what happens with the mailman stopping you, or someone doing the plowing, or children going to school on a school bus. It's a real safety concern, so I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you. State your name for the record, sir.
My name is Ronald Douglas. I live at 395 Grafton Street. My house is right on the corner. I've had a Subaru on June 13, 2003, went upside down in my front lawn. After a six-year-old, just got off the school bus. I have another, I'm 68 years old. DCF is mainly responsible for that ch, that child. So I have to put that hardship in place. The school bus comes down the street and it has to park in the middle of the road, and I've already had two incidents where people have gone speeding by the school bus. My concern is where this, their driveway is gonna go. It's right in front of my driveway. It's not a very safe area to play in.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, you can bring a cop down here for days in and days out, and it won't do any good. I'm responsible for the 30 mile, 10 mile speed signs because when Harrington came to the neighborhood, Route 44 didn't have speed signs, so I got Mr. Knight to give me speed signs, but that didn't do no good at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, my name is Dave Sadowski, Sadowski Engineering. Just to counter Mr. McMahon, this house is located less than 21 feet from the lot line. He's, he's, he's like seven inches away from being in violation, and he was talking about being located in the middle of the lot. Secondly, there's a clear circle on the lot that shows where the house is gonna go.
Yeah.
And it's on the other side of the pool area, nowhere near the back of the lot like he was indicating. Just to make that clear for the record, this plan does meet your requirements of showing where the house is gonna go. If you actually got a copy of the plan, you would know better.
Anybody? Hold on, no.
My name is Richard Zoll. I live at 370 Grafton Street. I'm opposed to this for a couple reasons. Number one, as in a butter, I, I know this land. I've lived there since, since before they put in their Memorial Highway. And when they, when Mrs. McGowan sold this land, those two houses were put in there, they were put in so that the people would have enough area on each side to make themselves comfortable. They didn't have the bylaw at that time where if you had triple E area, you could get a...
The rear lot, yeah.
The difference in the lot line. But now, when you're looking for a variance, from what I understand, for hardship, I can understand people looking for it, but looking for it for monetary value, I think it's...
That's already been dismissed.
Excuse me?
That's already been dismissed.
Okay.
For financial... For financial hardship. It's not, not relevant to proceedings.
That's basically all I've got.
Okay. State your name for the record, sir.
I'm Joseph Drage from 374 Grafton Street. The house is going to be built right on the back, in my backyard, basically. And I moved from Worcester, from City of Worcester, to the town of Shrewsbury, to have some privacy, to have some lot. Now, with the variance, and we're going to be, you're going to get variance to somebody to build in this lot, and everybody going to do that, we're not going to have no more privacy. We're going to be like given in City of Worcester. It's, it's going to affect everybody. It's going to decrease the value of my house, and affect it in every single way. I'm going to have people like in the backyard, on the side yard, driveway, right on the side of my hi, of my, of my yard, all the way from my yard, from front to the back, with nothing, not much left in there. I mean, that's not, that's not safe for my kids, and that's the main reason I moved to that new house, because it wasn't supposed, supposed to have some privacy, some issue that I don't have to worry about my kids in the backyard. That's number one. Number two, it's a flood zone area over there, and we already have, like last year, we have tons of problem with, with the water. Now, if, if we can't keep building houses, where the water's going to go? There's a wetland right behind us, if we're going to build it. If we're going to have, keep building houses, where the water's going to go? It's going to end up in our basement, go out, and it's going to end up in the yard and basement. It's going to go right into my septic tank, and it'll flood my basement. It's, it's affecting the neighborhood. And it's, so we're going to look at everywhere, at other neighbors too. I mean, everybody, I understand the, the town might say extra house, extra tax, but it's going to decrease our money, and we paying the taxes still, so. And that's, that's the whole thing. So please, consider us.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I got another thing on the wet zone.
Excuse me, hold on one second. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this? Yes?
I've got another thing on the wet zone. Harrington built his, his thing behind Home Depot, right? Mr. Knight had to come home at 3 o'clock in the morning and to put salt and sand on, on that road, right? Then he had to come up, and they put five drain ditches, all drains into the, into the, into one void that goes on Grafton Street. All that water goes down into my yard, right? But that's, there's another safety issue with the.
That, that's not what we're addressing here today, though. Thank you.
Yeah, just saying, it's, and that's because of the flood zone. That's being in the flood zone. All the state highway water.
Anybody else wish to be heard? Do you guys have any?
Yeah, all I would say, just to clarify a little bit, is in, in the petition, when I talked about the placement of the house being in the wrong place, you know, at the time the house was placed, the rear lot provision didn't exist. So it's in the wrong place in terms of compliance at this point. But I wasn't, wasn't suggesting that it was a survey error or something like that, where they meant to, to put it two feet in the opposite direction. But I, I would point out again, in, in that, in terms of the requirements for the rear lot, they do allow, the, the town is basically allowing rear lots, they do encourage that. It is a way to keep road frontage reduced in terms of the maintenance that the town has to incur for road maintenance and so forth. With the rear lot provision, you can create additional houses without additional road. And the requirements are such that it has to be a, you know, a good sized lot, and you have to have 50 feet of frontage. And we have 50 feet of frontage, and the proposed lot would be just under three acres. The existing house would be, you know, one, almost two acres, 1.87 acres. And what's required in that zone is 20,000 square feet. So, you know, we're, we've got four times, the existing house lot is four times larger than it would need to be, and the back is, not sure I can do the math that quick, but it's, but it's quite a bit larger than it needs to be. And so, you know, point of it is, the land is there, it clearly could accommodate with the minimal relief that we're requesting if, and again, you know, there is a way around it, if it's not granted, just in terms of reducing the structure. But again, it, that, that will not accomplish anything other than basically make the owner spend more money to cut a corner off the building, and then you end up, still end up with two house lots.
Anybody else?
Yes. Mr. Zola just cut his lot in half and sold one for financial gain. Put a valve.
That's irrelevant. Qualified.
No, I know, but he put a valve.
But if he didn't need a variance, that doesn't matter. I don't care. Anybody else who wishes to be heard? Last bite of the apple, go ahead.
It's the second bite of the apple. I still think the petition has failed to articulate the substantial hardship.
Okay. There be no further questions or comments. We will take it under advisement, and you will be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first 6:45 hearing is, let me find my agenda, is to hear the appeal of Matthew and Frank Tomiola, 295 Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 4-B to demolish an existing non-conforming two-family dwelling and construct a new two-family dwelling in Residence A District upon property located at 213 Old Mill Road. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 26 Plot 107. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Matt Tomiola, Frank in the Fox Development. Here of non-existing, pre-existing non-conforming. It's a two-family dwelling existing, and we're looking to remove it. It's in major disrepair. Put up a two-family duplex style. And we're not looking to increase the lot coverage, basically the same size of what's existing there with the structures.
Square footage, Matt, of the...
The currently is covered as 2,300, 2,332, and what we're proposing is 2,304.
So roughly the same.
It's above the same, yeah.
Could I just make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think this is how everyone should present a plan when they come for a hearing.
You know what it looks like, and you know what it's part B.
See what you got.
Anyone have any questions? I'm good. Do you have anything?
He's made it easy.
Yep. You guys, anything? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this matter? There be no further comments or questions, we will take it under advisement, and you will be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second 6:45 hearing is to hear the appeal of Jody K. Utter, 586 Main Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, for two special permits from the, under Section Table 6, Table 1, to convert a single-family dwelling to a professional office use, and under Section 4-B, to change the use on a non-conforming lot, as well as two variances under Section 7E, to place a 16-square-foot sign 5.5 feet back from the front property line, and under Section 6, Table 1, to exceed 10% lot coverage, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, in the Rural B Zone District upon property located at 204 Main Street. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 20 Plot 3. Whoever's speaking, please state your name for the record.
I'll start. Mr. Chairman, my name is Jeffrey Leland. I'm an attorney from North Row. I'm here with the applicants, Jody Utter and her husband David. And to my left is Patrick Healy from Thompson List and Engineering. He will be actually making the presentation, but I did just want to introduce the applicants and also basically say what we're looking for here is a change, from my standpoint, a change of use to a professional counseling office. Actually, I have a brief little outline, if I could bring it up to you, with the chair's permission.
As long as I can keep it.
Yes, it's just a brief outline of what her practice is.
Thanks.
Sometimes there's confusion that it's a medical office, it's a housing office. And Jody and, she has four other counselors that she will work with. That gives a general outline of the hours of use that her business is presently. It's in Shrewsbury now, but she wants to relocate it to this and be the owner of this biz, of this building. With more detail, though, I think I'd like to have Patrick Healy explain the, the lot and the other zoning issues.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you an outline of where, where the lot is located, this is at the corner of O'Donnell Ave and Main Street or West Main Street. You know, if they're back on the ground, they would miss the north end of the town. So currently, this is the existing building on the lot. They're proposing to change the use of the building. The only outward changes to the building would be in the front of the building to build an accessible route into the building from the driveway. We're proposing to use both of the existing curb cuts, so there wouldn't be any huge change to the visibility of the lot in the street. We're proposing one-way traffic coming in from O'Donnell Ave and exit onto West Main. We're proposing some angled parking spaces coming around the building here. A little bit of grade change to ease the slope coming in from the street. This currently a retaining wall across the back of the lot here. It's about a foot and a half to two feet. That would be taken out, and the grade would be lessened to make it more accessible. So there are 11 parking spaces required by the use. We're providing 11 parking spaces, so we're not looking for any roof in that area. We're showing one vein accessible space here. We'd have accessible entrance into the front of the building. We're proposing a sign here in the front of the building, just forward of the front line of the building, between the building and the street. I've provided the details of that sign. Approximately 16 square feet in area. It's held up by a single mast on, and it's of sufficient height and setback, so it will not obscure the sight distance from O'Donnell Ave.
Is it, will it be lit?
I presume it will be lit.
Backlit, how's it?
We haven't really talked about it.
Okay.
It's not designed to be internally.
Okay.
So we, we've got down the list of the special permits that we're requesting. One is to change the use of the property from residence to professional office. We're showing how that use can fit into the lot. The second is for a change to existing non-conforming use. So currently, the lot is not sized sufficiently for professional office use in the Rural B District. The zoning would require 40,000 square feet, and the lot's currently approximately 11,700 square feet. And then the building does not meet the front yard setbacks from either Main Street or O'Donnell. It's currently setback approximately 11 feet from West Main and 19 from O'Donnell. If it was a new building with that use in the district, it would be required to have 50-foot front yard setback. The last, so we're requesting that sign, that sort of, simply a piece of variance from the board. Professional office use in this district doesn't appear to allow signs, so we're asking for a variance to allow sign. And we're asking for a setback where it, where that would have to be setback 25 feet by the zoning, but we put it back here somewhere. So it would be very visible across the street. And then the last item was the percentage of open space on the lot. If this were a residence with this sort of a driveway that complied with 10% minimum, currently, as we're designing it, has 12.1% open space. As a business use in the district, it would be required to have 20%. So it's above the requirement per residence.
Less than commercial? Can these are special permits, not variances, on the subject because it's pre-existing?
Well, the, the setback for the sign.
Not for the sign, I'm talking about the other.
No, it's, no, it, this is a special permit for a non-conforming.
Just non-conforming, okay.
Lot and structure.
Okay. You okay?
I have a couple of concerns. First of all, I don't think the lot is large enough for this operation. I've seen other things that were approved, and there weren't ample, there wasn't ample parking, and the parking started overflowing out into side streets. That's one of my concerns. And another concern is exiting out onto Main Street. I would probably go for it if it was only exiting, heading east instead of going west across traffic. Those are my only concerns.
Yeah, I do have a question. So the existing house, you, it's just, you're going to just renovate it? It's, it's, you're not tearing it down or anything like that, right?
That's the proposal, to renovate the existing house from residence to office use.
Okay, so you're going to use the existing footprint? You're just going to renovate what's there?
Yes, the only, as I said, the only change to the exterior would be the accessible route from the parking to the building. There are currently steps going up into the house, so we'd build up a sidewalk going into that main entrance.
Okay. I have a concern about the, the suggested traffic pattern. I, I believe you said making the O'Donnell Ave in only, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Through the chair.
I've been to that intersection many, many, many times, and coming out of O'Donnell or the driveway, and making a left is extremely difficult and dangerous. And adding traffic in that location, I, I, I think it would, it would be better if it was in only from Main Street and right turn only out onto O'Donnell and go out that way. I know it's not convenient, but I found myself at the end of O'Donnell Ave backing up, turning around, and going out that way, because I was tired of sitting there trying to get out to make a left. I just don't see that that, adding traffic at that location is, 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 is good for your clients or, or good for the neighborhood in terms of safety.
Do you have anything else?
No, not right now.
Okay. Fred, you're done?
I'm done.
Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Okay. Any responses or? What's that?
Let me ask him a question.
Okay, go ahead.
If we were given some type of insurance about parking out into the street or just utilizing what you have designated, it would probably help. But I'm still not convinced about exiting left out onto Main Street as a good idea heading west across traffic.
Through the chair, we do have a plan before the planning board, which will be taken up on Thursday night. Sure, the traffic will be one of the items of discussion at that time.
Rook here.
Through the chair, if I could just speak to the parking issue specifically. The nature of the counseling and why I put it at the bottom of the scheduling, how the large part of the practice is with families and children. Tends to be one counselor, so that's one car, and one car per family when they come in and exit. So it's not the type of use that will have three or four vehicles per, you know, per session or per counseling office.
It's not like a physical therapy place where many people are coming in and having...
It's, it's mostly one-on-one counseling.
Is there administrative employees?
No. It would only be Jody, and she would be, instead of her doing counseling, she would be doing her own office work.
Okay.
So there is no staff in the present practice or anticipated.
Okay, I'm good. Okay, thank you. Anybody else before we close? You're good?
I'm all set.
Okay. There be no further questions or comments. We will take it under advisement, and you'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Our next 6:45 hearing is to hear the appeal of Jeffrey Muller, 44 Westwood Road, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 4-B to expand an existing non-conforming structure by adding two additions to the existing single-family dwelling. The addition in the front yard will meet the setback requirements. The addition in the rear yard will be 36 feet from the rear property line. The existing structure is 34 feet from the rear property line in the Residence B1 District upon property located at 44 Westwood Road. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 21 Plot 88. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jeff Muller. Basically, it's a single-family house that it's, at one point, had a very poor addition put on that caused it to be non-conforming. I'm basically looking to take that addition down, expand it just a little bit. There's two little bump outs that I just want to square off. Won't be any more non-conforming than it currently is. Pretty simple plan in all honesty. I've talked to my neighbors, one who could not be here did write a note saying that he has no problem with it. Another one is behind me, and I don't believe he has any issues. Another one is behind me and I don't believe he has any issues. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, and you're not changing the, you're not bumping out the footprint, so...
Not, what I'm doing is on the left side of the property, there's a little like two-foot jog I just want to square off. On the back section, there's a square I just want to square off and the garage will be moved forward. It's like six feet or something like that. But again, it shouldn't really change much.
Any questions?
You're not changing the height of the building, are you?
Right now, it's a flat rubber roof. I'm not gonna do two stories. The roof line...
You're just gonna pitch it?
Will pitch, yeah. But I'm not planning on doing two stories. But yeah, I have a flat rubber roof and that didn't work out too well with this winter.
I'm all set.
You're all set? Then I presume you're all set.
I'm all set.
Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, there be no further comments or questions. We will take it under advisement and you will be notified of our decision.
Do you want this sweater or is that not matter?
Oh, yeah, actually, sure.
Thank you.
6:45 hearing, our final 6:45 hearing is to hear the appeal of Jeff Bailey and Ann Mormon, 240 South Quinn Sigman Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass, for a variance to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section 7, table 2, to remove an attached carport constructed by variance in 1993 with a four-foot side yard setback and replace it with an attached two-car garage five feet from the side property lines to an existing single-family dwelling in the Residence B-2 District upon property located at 240 South Quinn Sigman Ave. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 45, plot 82. I have a question. If this was, it had a four-foot, now it's five feet, why is this not a special permit?
Because the, because the entire structure is going to change, pulling it further front in the house.
Okay. Okay. Please state your name for the record, please.
Ann Mormon.
Okay.
So as you can see from the photos, it was a hard winter. And being from Minnesota, I am not immune to weather, but because of the location of our property, we bought the house on Lake Quinn Sigman in 2011. And we took two years to find the perfect house in Shrewsbury after moving here in 2009. So the lot is great, being on the lake is wonderful, but the way that the winds blow, the carport just does not, the snow accumulates there and the weather, and so it's not really a good structure as far as storing anything. And we never parked the cars in there. We put bicycles and things for the kids. So we would like to do some renovations of the house because it doesn't have a proper dining room. The house was built on the original cottage foundation. That was about 100 years ago. And because of the property lines, it's kind of skewed on the lot. And we did get a certified plot plan done. We own part of our neighbor's driveway on the other side, so we know where our property actually is. You can see that the retaining wall that's in between our property, the carport, and the derelict property next door is falling apart, so we would like to repair that. That does have implications for lake conservation, which I know is not your board, but it is something that we care about. So we would like to build a two-car garage that is in front of the house, that would be balanced with the house. I believe that there's a drawing in your packet. And with the alignment of the roof and having the garage, that would be the best place to put it. We currently have a septic in the front yard, and so if we put the garage further into the center of the yard, that would compromise the septic system. And so, and then we would be in compliance all around except for that one little side. So we would be coming further away from the property line with the five-foot relief as opposed to a four-foot relief. So we would take down the carport, put the garage, and then a small addition in the back, which is in the diagram for a new kitchen.
What size is the garage?
I think it's a standard two-car garage.
How's the carport?
The carport barely fits, but it's right next to the house, so we would come towards the street, which is still enough of a setback from the South Quinn Sigman that we would not need a variance for that. It's only the side that we would be, be a bit close to the property line.
Is the shed gonna stay?
No, all that will go. So...
I don't have any at all.
They have a planted variance. So you think they have planted a variance?
Yeah, they are. It's in the packet.
If you'd like me to explain, so, right, they were, they constructed the carport under a variance. So this carport isn't pre-existing nonconforming, right? So they're didify variance. So that's why, and then the whole footprint of the garage will change location, but it won't go closer. So we're just making the point that since they were granted a variance for four feet before, now they're asking one for five feet.
Which is less, right? Got it. Okay. Everyone's okay? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Okay, there be no further comments or questions. We will take it under advisement and you will be notified of our decision.
All right, thank you very much.
Our first and final 7:00 PM hearing is to hear the appeal of Coles Pond Nominee Trust, 63 Cherry Street, Northborough, Mass, for a special permit and variance to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section 6, table 1, to operate a contractor's yard and to eliminate the requirement for screening from the public way of the commercial business district upon property located at 155 to 173 Hartford Turnpike. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 52, plot 87.
So this is the one that you have in your packet that Mr. DeFutis asked for a continuance?
Okay.
Based on the letter that we have from National Grid that they have some things to review. Just as for more information, though, once Mr. DeFutis looked into this a little bit more late afternoon, he decided that he may even be withdrawing this request, but couldn't get that in by, by the time of this meeting.
Let's give him a continuance.
So we'll give him a continuance. Can I get a motion?
Move to grant the request to continue.
If I get a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just check, is there enough time on the date?
Oh, yes, you mean to put him in for the October...
No, well, also statutory, are we enough time?
Oh, yes. I mean, he, if he wanted to move forward, we could go ahead and ask him to sign the waiver. If he decides that it's not gonna be withdrawal, it's gonna be a continuance, he will sign the waiver for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back in order. You can always ask, yeah.
Well, I have a couple of hearing I probably should have spoke up earlier. I live on 215 Old Mill Road, but I didn't hear when you said...
It's a closed hearing, I can't take anything else, yeah.
All right. Is there any place I can see those plans? You have them?
Sure.
Right here.
Yep.
I mean, it's the assessor's office later, so I don't want to be now.
These are extra.
These are extras.
Yeah, I can review them with you if you want to come and see me tomorrow another time.
I should have spoke up earlier.
I think I'll be, and approve it.
Okay. Let's go back to, uh, continuance for Coles Pond Nominee Trust has been unanimously approved as has the continuance for 730 Boston Turnpike. Moving right along.
Manchester.
Full throttle, they are...
Full throttle, right.
Yeah. 152 Boston Turnpike. They are here for special operator marine repair facility, sell marine vehicles and the commercial...
Boston Turnpike or...
Parker Turnpike.
Parker Turnpike. I just said commercial business, yeah. And display marine vessels in the front yard. Any discussion? Anyone?
The only concern I had was the, under the power...
Patty, Patty, excuse me. Could you do this another time?
All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. When can I see?
Sure, tomorrow. Yeah, just give me a call tomorrow at the office.
I'll wait till you're done.
Okay.
Okay. The only concern I had is the power lines, but he says there's plenty of rooms for storage if they weren't under the power lines.
I don't see this issue.
I mean, maybe we could make it...
It's not like there's a structure.
Right.
Right away is the issue.
Yeah, but it's in, it's in Nashville grids right away. They have that procedure that they sent us a letter on. I think we just make a contingent on it. Pass it.
Make a contingent.
Yeah.
Other than that, I have no problem with it.
Okay. Uh, do all four of these at once? Can I get a motion for three special permits and one variance?
Two special permits and...
So, because one was the...
Right, yeah, I'm sorry.
I move that we vote on the three things as presented by the chairman.
Second?
And conditional upon the right away.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So that's the...
The selling marine, that's the one that's, we don't need, right?
Right.
The one, yeah, yeah. Is it the operator marine, marine vessel repair?
It's the repair that they don't need.
Oh, oh, this is what they don't...
Wrong one, okay. What was the sale? This is the one. Okay.
Three on that one, right?
151 Hartford Turnpike, move, move and replace mobile home and replace a mobile home? Anyone have any issues?
I don't have any problem with that.
No.
Nope.
Nope, nope.
I think it cleans it up.
Yeah.
I move to approve both special permits.
That's actually just one.
Or one, one to do two. I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 152 Hartford Turnpike, two special permits and a variance have been unanimously approved. There you go.
What's language?
No, not no.
No.
Just one. 151 Hartford Turnpike has been unanimously approved. Next, 396 Grafton Street, rear yard variance.
I'm opposed to this one, yeah.
I kind of am too. I don't like creating lots.
Well, I don't see any derogation from the bylaw of this. I would normally, I would normally be in favor of it. I have a concern that we don't have all the information because this is an LLC. So is it gonna be a commercial building in time or is it gonna be a house?
It's a residential.
I've seen residential in neighborhoods have apartments of some type or other. So I don't think it derogates from the bylaw. I don't see a problem with the land, but I'm not sure we have all the information. So I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay. Yeah, and I agree, I agree with exactly what Mel said. I didn't, to be honest with you, I did, I thought just residential house going in. I didn't think about any, anything other than that because, you know, to build access to get back to that lot, to build it, I think they do have the right to do that, you know? The house was there. To access the rear of the lot, they have to, but it's, as far as specifying, I mean, do we want to, if we were to approve it, do we specify that it would have to be just a residential home?
It's a residential district. That would get taken up by the building department.
Yeah, right.
That's, to me, that's not a concern.
So by saying that, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't see the hardship, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's where I was. Okay, can I get a motion?
Move to deny.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Make sure I word this properly. All in favor of denying or opposed to the variance signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed to...
Aye.
So is that a CVS that's going on the Boston Turnpike? It sounds...
And I don't like voting no on that one. Just, just because...
I don't like creating houses.
No, I get, I get it, but I just didn't see the hardship.
Right, there was no hardship. It was self-created and there was no hardship.
I think there's a hardship, but I just don't think I had enough information to vote for it.
Okay. All right, this has been denied four to one. One, 396 Grafton Street. Next, 213 Old Mill Road, Matthew and Frank Tamiola, special permit to...
He's gonna clean that area up and make it nice.
Can I get a, any discussion?
No, I think it's straightforward.
Anyone?
I like seeing the...
Someone give me a motion.
Move to approve the special permit for 213 Old Mill Road.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, mainly just the...
Oh, the CVS.
That's it.
I believe.
Do you think he's in...
Pretty certain.
Yeah, okay.
Is that gonna be for next month, Patty?
CVS says yes, next month.
Mr. 40B, is that coming?
Well, we're hearing more things, but we don't know for sure. I haven't seen any, any changes yet.
213 Old Mill has been unanimously approved. Next is 204 Main Street, special permits for professional business and nonconforming lot, variances for lot coverage and a sign.
We only have one concern about the traffic, but I think that would be probably handled at planning board and if they thought about it wisely, they would correct it.
Is that true?
I think it's a planning board issue.
I think, I think that we will. Okay, depending upon how it's presented and what's presented. But I do happen to agree with you that coming out of O'Donnell and taking a left to go west on Main Street is, is, is a problem, especially in the morning when the schools are going... Is, is a problem, especially in the morning when the schools are gone.
Certainly, it is.
They're not going to be able to make a left out of, they wouldn't be able to come out of there.
And if, if you're coming out of the driveway, which is what they've proposed, we know it's hard to make a left.
Right.
But if you come out of the driveway and you're making a right, which is fairly easy to do, but if there's someone also trying to come out of O'Donnell, it complicates trying to get out of O'Donnell.
Oh, yeah.
And I, my suggestion is to have right turn only on O'Donnell, and that's it. But we're not really talking about that, so...
Well, we could make that a condition. We're allowed. We want that to be a condition.
But they didn't present that to us.
Doesn't matter.
I don't, I don't think that's a good idea at this point.
You think that ties your hands?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it, I think it is a planning board issue.
Okay. It is.
And at first, I had a little problem with the amount of parking, but the way they stated it's only one-on-one.
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to have that much of a problem.
I think they're going to be...
Yeah, so it's one, one, one every 35 minutes.
Right, so I don't think there's any problem there either.
I believe it's a 15-minute hour.
Is it a 15-minute hour?
15-minute hour.
They, they do say in their own description of practice, an eight-car maximum, but the nature of the practice is cars coming in at staggered times.
Right.
So I don't have any problem with that.
Okay. So can I get a motion to handle, uh... To approve two special permits and two variances? The variances are for the 16-foot sign, 5.5 feet from the setback, the property line, and to exceed 10% lot coverage will all be districts for uses other than single-family. So I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
I think if any butters were opposed, they would have been here.
Yeah, if there were any opposed, they should have been here.
Right.
And I, that's good.
That part of Main Street is becoming very commercial.
Well, yeah.
I prefer the commercial.
44 Westwood Road, Jeff Millar, special permit, expand an unconforming single-family dwelling.
I don't have any problem with that.
I don't have any problems with that either. Questions, comments, concerns?
Sounds like an improvement.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the special permit for 44 Westwood Road.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? And last but not least, 240 South Quinn Sigman, garage addition. There's a lot of...
I don't have any problem with that.
This looks like an improvement. It's less non-conforming.
Yeah, and it was also a hardship.
She has a septic system on there.
Agreed.
Exactly. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? New business. We have our calendar somewhere. 2016, did anyone check it out? Okay, so the only change that we're making is the deadline for our meetings used to be Friday at 5:00 PM.
Now it's noon.
No, we reduced it to Friday at noon this year. Now we're further reducing it to Thursday at noon.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, for next year.
I'll tell you if that makes it easier for Patty.
What was your reason for that, then?
Because with the volume of applications that we're getting and to try to review and write the legal notices with our staff and get them into Michelle by the deadline so that, to the Worcester TNG, we're having a lot of trouble. We've had many meetings where we're having 10-plus applications being submitted now.
All submitted at the last minute.
And they do.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
One more.
Yeah, there is something.
Mel's.
Mel's.
New business. Oh, 27 Pine Dell Road, Diverty Builders. Yes, it wasn't on the original one. They're requesting, I got a letter here from Quinn Engineering. They own the property at 27 Pine Dell Road. The property is located in the commercial business zoning. We granted a variance to allow construction of a single-family dwelling. The decision is dated October 10th and is recorded in the book, Worcester Registry. They want to request a six-month extension to hold on to their rights because they cannot exercise their variance as of now.
And how long do they have?
They get one six-month extension.
They get one six-month, and then...
That's it, and they would have to come back. 204 Main Street, Shrewsbury, Jody Utter, has been unanimously approved. Two variances and two special permits. I don't have an issue with it. I've already granted it.
It's proactive, instead of coming in here after it's expired, which is more likely what we'd see, so I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
I agree.
Can I get a motion?
Move to grant the request for continuation of the variance we approved on...
Can I identify it? It's an extension.
Grant the extension.
27 Pine Dell Road, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? 240 South Quinn Sigman Avenue has been unanimously approved, as has 44 Westwood Avenue. Do we have any old business or any correspondence?
Uh, no.
So what do I need to say for the next meeting? Still 7:30.
Just 7:30?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the extension has been unanimously approved, and can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.